... meeting to order for December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Please rise for our invocation with Pastor Albert Saldaña and Papa Maya's Pledge of Allegiance.
Papa and Ellen, we thank you tonight, Lord, for bringing us here today. We thank you for all these good people with good hearts, with good intentions, Lord. They want to make a difference for this awesome city of Florisville. We come asking for your guidance. We come asking that you will be here with us tonight. We pray for unity, for peace. Let your will be done, Lord. You've given the power and authority to rule over the city, and we ask that you would help us, Lord. Bring us together as one, as a family, so that we can do that job that you've called us to do. We thank you, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and invisible. Thank you. You may proceed. We do have a call for tonight's meeting and attendance. Mrs. Cantu, Mr. Jimenez, Mr. Ortiz, myself, and Mrs. Martinez. Thank you so much for being here. Counsel, I would like to remind you, I had trouble seeing counsel from both sides earlier, so you are now on camera, Councilman and Councilwoman, and so I can see you. Would you would like to say something, or if you'll just raise your hand, I can see you right in front of me. Thank you. Any citizens' comments at this time? This is an opportunity for any citizens that have any concerns or comments to the city.
Ma'am?
May I? Yes, sir.
Mayor, counsel, President Salas for Florisville. Later on, I'll be presenting some diverse changes as a board member, but right now, though, I'm here simply as a citizen. I know you'll be selecting members from a different voice later in this meeting. I fully appreciate that's a difficult process, and I would never pretend to substitute my judgment for yours. However, I want to, I'm going to ask that you consider some thoughts that I have. As you know, FEDC is in a stage of transition, which is how the new executive director. We also have several significant ongoing projects, upgrading indoor, bringing into ADA compliance, a big portion of our downtown area, looking forward to assisting with some event center updating, and seriously looking to make a dent about affordable housing charges, et cetera. It's a time when we need to bring things to a stability and our makeup. Mr. Will, who has passed us in the middle of presence, electorally president, Ray Lender, I know he's coming out, but I, for one thing, that we need to hold him over for at least a year or less, whatever it takes. I know that that would be contrary to our bylaws. However, then we can justify to keep us, and of course, doing so would not set a precedent because our circumstances are unique, and it would be a limited one-time exception. Again, I am going to ask that you consider doing this if you agree, by whatever proper means available. Thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Is the sound system clear enough for the audience? It's very fuzzy up here. Very fuzzy.
Would you ever be here with her?
Not completely clear, but...
It's got a little static. Okay, so we'll continue. Moving on to old business, items one, A, B, and C, that's consideration action to approve minute meetings. I'm sorry, was there any other citizens' comments? I didn't mean to not give anybody enough to... Moving on to old business, consideration action to approve minute meetings for the regular council meetings on October eighteenth. You have asked in the past if you could do them all together, so consideration action to approve minutes for the first special meeting on November twentieth, and consideration action to approve meeting minutes for the second special meeting on November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. I'll give counsel a few minutes to go through those in case you have any questions or concerns or corrections.
Do you join A, B, C?
Yes, if the counsel so chooses.
Ma'am, because this was minutes from former counsel, some were not council members at the time that we had those meetings.
So A and B?
Mrs. Martinez was not a board member at that time, but C she was.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to... Well, let's go ahead and go one at a time. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular council meeting on October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I move to approve the minutes for the regular council meeting on October the eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Three upstairs. Thank you. Consideration action to approve meeting minutes for the first special meeting on November the twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
I move to approve the minutes for the first special meeting on November the twenty, twenty, eighteen.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Cantu, a second by Mr. Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, and moving on to the meeting minutes for the second special meeting on November twentieth.
I move to approve the minutes for the second special meeting on November the twenty, twenty.
I have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Cantu. Do I have a second?
No, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. I'm going to move a little bit of the business up because of the travel time that some of our presenters have. So I'm moving on to new business, and that would be item, item three, E. And if I can call up Phelps representatives at this time? It's a very long item listed on our agenda, and so I'll let you gentlemen explain a little bit more about it.
Well, this is a purely legal issue as opposed to financial.
Mayor, Mr. Counsel, Jeff Coons, I'm voting in our to be part counsel of the city of Phelps. You may remember that one of the driving forces here for the Phelps bond deal was to amend the outstanding bond ordinances in a manner to allow us to replace the cash in the reserve fund to the tune of about $1.4 million in surety policy. These amendments to these ordinances allow us to do that. So I'm glad to answer any questions, but the ordinances here just amend the outstanding revenue bond ordinances from Phelps to allow them to implement the surety policy and to free up that cash for capital improvements. They've all been agreed to by the insurance companies and by the bondholders, so we'll ask consensus from you guys. Be glad to answer your questions.
Any questions by our counsel, from Mr. Coon?
Mr. Rodriguez, did you go through them?
I did, and I am in agreement with what Mr. Coon is presenting to the counsel. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the counsel? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Some more, may I?
I have a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance, and if there's no number on there, do we have to put a number in before we do the motion?
If it's item three, E, it's going to be ordinance number twenty eighteen dash eighteen.
What is it?
Twenty eighteen dash eighteen.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash eighteen by Councilman Ortiz, segmented by Mr. Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Now, I'll step aside because the remaining presentation from the general manager and the Phelps financial advisor is really exciting news and really great for Phelps. So I'll sit down, and there's no legal questions, ma'am.
Great, thank you so much. Moving on to item F, consideration and adoption of an ordinance by the city council of the city of Florisville authorizing the issuance of City Florisville, Texas Electric Light and Power System Improvement Revenue Bond Series two, twenty eighteen. And you have some wonderful news, because I heard it earlier.
Yes, Mayor, I do. Thank you very much, Mayor, for inviting me here, members of the council. My name is Robert Henderson. I'm the Managing Director with RBC Capital Markets. We have the honor and privilege of being the financial advisor to the Ford'sville Electric Light and Power System. I noticed that Mr. Phillips was very quick to sit down behind me, but I am going to kind of speak on behalf of Mr. Phillips and Marcy Moody Jacobs, who is the Chief Financial Officer of Phelps. We do indeed have some great news. As you know, we were here last month, and the city council approved the form, the content, and the distribution of the preliminary official statement for the Phelps transaction for $16 million. Pursuant to the action of the council, we undertook a number of steps. First of all, of course, we presented it to the rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch, and therein lies the first piece of really good news. Ms. Jacobs and I, and Steve Moffett, an engineer with the Phelps, have been having an ongoing battle with Standard and Poor's for the last two transactions, discussing the appropriateness of what they call the fixed cost charge, the FCC, fixed cost charge. We made some progress this time, both with the preliminary written information that Ms. Jacobs provided, with the information that we were able to get through CPS and provide to rating agencies. Standard and Poor's increased the bond ratings of Phelps from A-plus to double A-minus on senior lien debt, and from A-minus to A-plus on the junior lien debt. This is very exciting news, because what it means is, is that while we've had some issues with rating agencies, not rating agencies, but insurance companies in the past, both with respect to qualification and pricing on insurance policies, with these kinds of ratings, we don't need insurance anymore. So we're able to get substantially lower interest rates for the citizens that are customers of the Phelps system, and do so without having to pay insurance premiums. So we're very excited about that. As part of the work that we did, Ms. Jacobs did with respect to presenting this to the rating agencies, we did a study of all of, not only CPS's wholesale power customers, but all the power customers of LCRA. Collectively, there are about thirty-six of those wholesale power customers between LCRA and CPS. Ford'sville Electric Light and Power System, and I want to give a lot of credit to Marcy and her work, is the highest rated wholesale power customer of those two systems. Believe it or not, and I don't want to get myself in trouble here, but you guys, your electric system is now rated higher than the city of San Marcos's electric system. And if you think about the demographics, the difference in number of population, and all of those factors, it's quite remarkable. The action you just took with respect to amending the power ordinances is also very important, as Mr. Coon just explained. What allows us to do is to replace a cash funded reserve fund with a surety bond. You've got about $1.6 million in cash in the reserve funds now. As a function of this debt issuance, you're going to be able to, your average annual debt service in that reserve fund is going to go up to about $2.3 million. But because of these amendments, we were able to replace that cash funded reserve with a surety bond, and because of the bond rating increase, get a very substantial reduction in that surety bond cost. We are going to pay only 2% on that bond. This would be about $46,000. That, as Mr. Coon indicated, will allow you to free up cash to avoid having to issue additional debt in the future. All of that together goes down to, okay, you're issuing $16 million, what are you paying for? The studies that Mr. Moffett and Marcy had gotten into with respect to projecting cash flows expected a 5% interest rate. We fudge that down, as I explained to the Phelps board this morning, to 4.75%. The interest rate that we were able to negotiate with Frost Bank, who is very familiar with the city of Florisville, we got an interest rate of 3.8985%, just shy of 3.9%. That is about $120,000, $122,000 per year, less than was originally anticipated. You take that savings on the interest rates, and you add to that the $110,000, I was thinking it's $11,000 per month, right, so $122,000 a year that you've been having to put into reserve fund, that you no longer have to put into the reserve fund, and collectively, this system has improved its cash flow position to the tune of about $250,000 a year. The last piece of really great news that I want to show the counsel is that as the Phelps system has been improving its operational results and has been lowering its borrowing from 70% of capital needs to 50% of capital needs, and what I mean by that is for every, historically, for every dollar that Phelps has spent on capital outlay, they've generated net operating revenues to pay for about 30% of it, and you've gone out and borrowed about 70% of it. That has been lowered to 50-50% ratio with the anticipation of the next transaction. Between that and the paying off of your old debt, the system is currently contemplating issuing debt in about three or four years for about $12 million. It all depends on growth factors and loan factors and so forth. But the exciting news is, with all these improvements that have been accomplished on this transaction, we can actually project that you can come do the next transaction and you won't need an increase in your debt service. Between the reductions in the debt service on your existing debt, the savings we're achieving here, and the projected growth, we expect that next time you get ready to do this, you're not going to need a debt utility rate increase as it pertains to debt service. So for four or five different reasons, we're very excited about the results of this transaction. Before I turn it over back to Mr. Coon, if you have any questions on the legal, do you have any questions about the ratings, about the process of the sales, about our results?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
No. I have a question.
Yes, Concerned Ortiz.
Concerning this upgrade from A to B negative, how long would these issuance of these bonds last until I'll come back for another issuance of the bonds?
Okay, well, great question, but there's really two questions inherent in your question. The Phelps system has historically issued debt over a period of 25 years. However, post the financial crisis of 2008, the rating agencies have undertaken a process of where they come back every two years and do what they call a surveillance rating review every two years, whether you issue debt or not. In some instances, they're coming back more often than that. So we actually talked to the rating agency people last year. They did not want to adjust the bond ratings last year, even though we didn't have a debt transaction last year, they did come back and look at us. This year, they improved it.
And you said that Phelps saved many, many thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Where are those funds going to be utilized?
Well, what will happen is, is that the retained earnings in the Phelps system will be increased by virtue of the debt service being less. So it will follow the bottom line at Phelps. How they spend that money is going to be a function of their budget. I would suspect that what's going to end up happening is that the ability of the system to pay for even more capital outlay without having to borrow money is going to be enhanced by this, and we may even be able to get through that 50% level and borrow even less than that. But, you know, Mr. Jacobs may be the best person to answer that. Does that sound right?
It does. It would be up to our board to determine what we wanted to do with that.
So the money that's going to be extra, you could utilize anywhere in the electric system?
Yes.
It's not targeted for a certain area or payback or nothing?
No.
The bond is going to be utilized for buying anything they want to issue?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Henderson? Mr. Coon, would you like to...
Let's get on the record. I'm Jeff Coon with North Coast Board, right. Just to refresh the council's memory and practice, both of the other owners, both Stockdale have approved the transaction. As Mr. Henderson noted, the Phelps board, as the mayor knows, approved the transaction this morning. If the city council approves the transaction this evening, we'll sell the bonds to Frost Bank. We've already delivered the transcript of the Texas Attorney General, knowing that given the holiday schedule, we've had prefiled everything, but we're going to close the transaction and fund it on December the 28th. So we're in line with all the great news, financial news that Mr. Henderson gave you. From a legal standpoint, Phelps board has approved it, both the cities opposed to Stockdale, and if y'all approve that, we will fund the transaction on December 28th. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question, may I?
Yes.
You said that Stockdale is stopping. Why did they have to approve it if Florisville was the majority?
The way the regulatory agreement was is that those two cities are on a portion of the... So Florisville controls the issuance of debt, the issuance of rates, but both of us have to approve the issuance of debt, and both of them have.
They have to?
Yes, sir.
It's mandatory.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Coons, or Marcy, or Mr. Henderson? And will this ordinance be twenty eighteen dash nineteen?
Yes, ma'am.
So if there are no other questions, any citizens' comments pertaining to this? Any questions? Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion to accept, or consideration action to accept ordinance twenty eighteen dash nineteen.
So, may I?
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Ortiz. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Segmented by Mr. Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you very kindly, Mayor. I appreciate it. Merry Christmas to each of you.
Thank you. We are just... We do have the record here. I'll leave tomorrow's tomorrow. I'll sign those right after the meeting. Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you. Moving back on our agenda to presentation, item two, A, municipal court order report. We have Judge Jimenez here, and I think he's got...
Mayor, counsel. Glad to be here tonight. The report is from July the first, 2018, to September the 30th, 2018, and then I go to the last quarter, and then I go to the last year, the same quarter. So we'll start out with current quarter and total fees and fines paid were $47,367.07. Total remittance to the state was $20,544.07. For a total collected of $67,912.25. The last quarter, we had the total fees and fines paid was $46,143.05. Total remittance to the state, $15,898.59. Total collected was $62,041.64. Now, we compare it to last year, July the first, 2017, to September 30th, 2017. Last year, we had, and on this quarter, total fines and fees paid were $25,566.59. Total remittance to the state was $9,207.16 for a total collected of $34,773.75. So we kind of doubled the last two quarters, you know, over last year's same quarter.
I know our city attorney has been working very closely with municipal court. What is your opinion on how it's going, and what are some changes that y'all are making?
We have very... Madam Mayor and Counsel, good evening. We have very aggressive collectors in our office, the three individuals, one of whom being Ms. Lisa Trebo, who's one of our clerks, who's been there, I think, probably the longest. And then we have Eluita, and also Monica Cordova. They are busy on the phone every time that I'm in there. They are either on the phone, or they're talking to individuals that are coming in. We do have, we've done a great job. I'm going to toot their horns, because they're a busy mayor, and they're really trying to do everything that is possible to collect those funds. We also have some plans. We are going to do our warrant roundup. However, we're going to entitle it a little bit different. It's going to be entitled warrant forgiveness. And if anybody would like to discuss what that entails, I would welcome you to come over to municipal court so that we can talk about it. So we think that that's going to be very favorable. I know that even during docket call, we've had a lot of more people that have been showing up.
Heineberger's gotten involved, too.
And they've gotten involved as well. I give a lot of credit to the office staff, because I've seen what they're able to do.
They find out all the paperwork that we were behind, you know?
Yes. We did some specialized training a couple of weeks ago. We learned some different things that we're going to be able to implement in helping the citizens, but still with mind to try and bring in those fees and stuff of that nature. I know that we also have trials that are getting ready to come up. I think that we're doing some binge trials come January and February. So we're really becoming very active and trying to do what's best for the city of Florisville. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ready?
Any questions by council members? Thank you very much.
Okay, there you go. Going for Christmas.
You, too. Moving on to item two, be our city manager to our, excuse me, FEDC Director introduction.
Thank you, Mayor and City Counsel. This is a promontory, because I think even before he started working, Mr. Rodriguez had been around. But I'd like to take this opportunity to officially welcome Johnny Rodriguez to the city of Florisville. He is no shyest for the microphone, so I will let him speak at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Turner.
Madam Mayor, honorable counsel, it's a pleasure to be here in honor. I would like to tell you that, hooch, it has been a whirlwind two weeks. I tell you, when the term is coined to say that he hit the ground running, I hit the ground running. But I am glad and pleased to tell you that we have really, really produced and conducted a tremendous amount of work within these two weeks. I have brought the FEDC up to par on a lot of the major projects that we're handling that are in the industrial park, and then other properties we've been having as well. I've been trying to represent the FEDC as well, to show up at some of the functions that you already had here, to show that we're involved, and we're community, civic involvement into the community in the events that you're having, such as the Christmas side ceremony, which turned out to be a fantastic event, that I was pleased and honored to be there on behalf of the FEDC. The assimilation into the board that you currently have has been really good. We have really worked hand in hand. They have been tremendously helpful, informative, and anything that I pretty much have needed, they've been able to help me with to get assimilated into the program. Your city manager, Ms. Turner, has been phenomenal. She is a very fast-paced person, so we are very compatible in the manner in which we conduct our business and work. It's pretty quick. We almost could read our minds right off the bat, because she would just, she came over and just plucked over all this work in front of me and said, this is what we've done. And immediately, I pulled out my little stickies and went through it, and okay, checked out. Okay, you need this, you need this, this, that. So we got all that out of the way, and then she just turned me loose to do the work. So I just want to compliment you on your city manager's been really great to work with. And everybody here in the city has been just so nice to me. The citizens, the Wilson County News, the people, the employees, everybody. Everybody is just welcoming with all the arms, and I was just enamored by it, and I want to thank you, everyone. I can assure you that I'm going to be working very hard. My minimum work day these last couple of weeks, because tomorrow we'll be completing two weeks since December third, has been, my first day was 10 and a half hours, my second day was 11 and a half hours, the third day was 12 and a half hours, and then the fourth day, 11, and it's been like that ever since. I think the first day I went home at about 5:00 was yesterday. But I have really put in a lot of hours, but it's not a problem, and I tell you why, because I love it. I really love this kind of team-building environment that I've been dressed into. So I want to assure the citizens of Florisville, Texas, and discovery board that I will work hard. I will use all of my skills and knowledge to help this community move forward in its economic development retention and building the city to be number one in this region. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 2C, presentation, our official zoning map. We have Chris Stewart, the Mooney Engineering, I know this is a long time coming, Chris, and...